I didn't get any other side of it.
It is on the line.
I know, you just run up to it.
Yeah, right. But you know what I mean? It's not a weak, that's an excuse actually. And I think simply what we should be doing is looking at someone with the other tells, going through the signs.
That's true.
Yeah, simplify our process. One more thing.
Sure.
I want to bring back up about this private drive.
Yeah.
This was adopted as a policy back then.
Yeah.
It was a law, you just never put in the code, you have four lots and private drive. But it worked for years.
Yeah.
Since 84, we've done it, this part.
So why isn't it being jammed?
No, it was jammed instead. You have to change it. He said, "No, no, that's not the code." Next thing we had coming in was, "Oh no, how, how do I keep that on the code?" And that's what happened.
And therein lies the risk of a policy versus a code.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a policy. Now, the code doesn't say, "In your line."
Yeah.
So as a policy, and this is a question. Could you go ahead and say, "You're coming with a piece of property, no, you're allowed four houses on that parcel." As we did before. Instead of jamming six of them in there, substandard detention pines jammed into a corner, you know what I'm talking about?
The back of the code doesn't...
It doesn't.
It doesn't say.
But it doesn't say you can either.
In your state, it doesn't tell.
So, what did they say?
Because four parcels, it's a small subdivision, huh? Anything above that, that's a large subdivision. Your state department also said, "Any subdivision." It's still going to add. That is a subdivision.
Yeah, so if you got four lots, that would be something...
They had very specific...
And I don't know, if you make it a private drive, is that...
Well, it doesn't talk about private drive. It talks about, in terms of, you can take a parcel, and I know, I have two lots out this year, three is left, and two more.
Well, that's all ambiguity from some... That's problematic in this.
It's like splitting up the town. It's a whole dialogue. But Steve Law.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, yeah.
You know, it seems like if you have a 37-year success rate on a policy, and there's just no ambiguity because it never got turned into code and law or whatever. This seems like something we could, in the next couple of months, at least, talk about the...
With code, that would be good.
Which means, you know, you write up and you think it through. I mean, some of the stuff you just said, I mean, you know, if you want four, no more than four on private drive. I don't know, what does that mean, private drive has got to be a certain width because of the fire code, right?
Yes, to me, it stands as a...
You know, every action has reactions.
Yeah.
So you propose it, and then we do a public hearing. Who's going to come in and say, "Absolutely not"? I guess the developers may be.
Sure.
And then, you know, the town board votes on it, and wouldn't that be it?
What if you have a five-acre parcel, and you say, "Okay, private drive, only four lots." A guy down the street's got a 25-acre parcel. And he only got a dedicated house. What's a dedicated road then? What's all, simple. Got 25 acres, you put a road, it's in town standards.
And I think the key is the private road. And I think that's, that's the key. Is that, because you're right, there's your answer, then you, you're building a subdivision of the dedicated road. I don't, I don't know, it'd be interesting. I got my supervisor's lunch on Friday. I'll make a note. If you guys got anything in your codes or whatever about private roads, or you can have some beautiful, meandering private road through 100 acres, and you have 100 houses on a private road, and they've got an homeowners association that figures out how to allow that, I'd be surprised. And even if they had that, is that just because, you know, that's the old jimmy jumped off the bridge, can I jump off the bridge? You know, we still make laws for our town.
I hate seeing parcels again, you know, six acres included with 10 houses on it, on a private drive, detention ponds that are shoved into a corner, and we have a homeowners association, don't know if that thing is ever going to work or not down the road.
Do you remember this more?
Those are just some of the issues.
Okay. I'm gonna make a note of that, and then... I think I'm gonna get out of your hair, so you have...
Yeah, we gotta help with this.
Again.
Do, like, do you follow precedents of previous things that you decided?
That's right.
So why can't we follow precedents in this case?
It was a question, right?
Like, if that's what John tried for 30 years.
Since 85.
Provided that we haven't deviated from that.
And Derek, I agree with you, but you also take out any ambiguity in debate.
Yeah, not so much.
By just turning it into a...
So, in that, but I'm just saying, you know, you can't hold it. Like, this is what has happened in the last 30 years, so, you know, there is no defined private road.
If you go back...
We have defined it by precedent.
If you go look to the back and look at parcels that have four lots on it, and if one of them, one pretty great tip, it's on, on the name of a... You got four on the private drive, it's worth a lot of years, and you're not, you're not big enough. Trash is shit up there.
Anyways, that's in effect, you also have proof.
Well, that's it, it's got a track record shows where, what's happened. These things we've been approving these couple of years, I don't know. You know what I'm talking about.
Well, gang?
Okay, thanks, Sam.
Thank you, and for the public that's just walking in. If you come to our organizational meeting on January 1st, when the town board sets up the government for the year, there's like 100 resolutions that are kind of housekeeping, you know, simple things like this is who's going to pay the bills and stuff. We have to do that every year, internationally. And one of the resolutions is, is that the liaison from the town board to the planning board is the town supervisor. And I'm the town supervisor. So, we try to meet quarterly, just to give an update on things, have a little, you know, Q and A. And this is the fourth quarter meeting between the liaison and the planning board. You guys got to see a little bit of the dynamics of that. It's where we solve the problems we want, right there, Derek? All right, gang, well, have a good meeting.
Private meeting. Private meeting. Nice going. They were telling me, so we recorded. Illegal.
It's like, I've been selling my apples, and I'm in the apples. So, if someone asks the list, that's it.
What's the deal now? It's not Derek, it's somebody else. Are you going to decolleting that person, or tell him, ask him?
Yeah, some text. What's that?
Somebody's turning this up.
All right, we're gonna find out from the clerk.
Welcome you to the November 6th school's planning board, which will join the pledge of allegiance for us. The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very honor for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Kusel.
Here.
Mr. Malta.
Here.
Mr. Mixel.
Present.
Mr. Jardina.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
I'm sorry.
In person.
Okay, tonight we have, Mr. DiMarco is our attorney this evening, and let's hope we have another attorney in place, and working with us. He also is the attorney of the DVA.
Yes, two years.
Yeah, a couple of years, yeah. Okay, with that, let's see. Two items tabled, Nolan Rose tabled, and Penske signed, two signs were tabled, so if there was anybody here for that. And the next one is Herman Road. Why don't you go ahead? 704 Herman Road. Herman Road accessory structure located 704 Herman Road. Effton Ronald Breitman is requesting preliminary final site plan approval to allow construction of a 40-by-60 accessory structure located on a 3.2 acre parcel located in the LL Large Flat Residential District under the code of Town of Webster. Yes, sir. Why don't you give us your name, your address, and your proposal?
Alex, I'm getting everybody, thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Robin Whiteman, this is my wife Rachel Whiteman. We live at 704 Herman Road. Played the beat back in Webster, because my wife is a Webster alum, so, looking to do some more building.
Moving close by a cell tower, huh?
What was that?
Nothing. No, just kidding. All right, let's see what you got. Are you putting up a accessory building on there?
Correct.
And you've already contracted on it, your lot is, it's a huge lot, with a 600 feet, almost 507 feet deep?
Correct.
And you are 15 feet from the sideline?
Correct.
And the proposed unit is 2,400 square feet?
Correct.
So that meets the requirements, he's under Josh, am I correct?
That is correct.
He's under, he meets the requirements, okay?
Under the 2%.
Yeah, lot size.
Yes, yes.
Lot size, yeah. And what are you proposing, what are you using, the material colors and stuff you're using here?
Yes, they should be in there.
Yeah, you do, yeah.
The accessory building will actually match the current home we just built. It'll be white and black.
Okay. Anybody, any questions?
No.
Needs all the requirements for the site?
Think there's gonna be gas, electric, water out there?
There won't be right now, eventually I might do that, right now it's just gonna be, the primary purposes of it is to house classic vehicles that I've acquired over many generations in my family, because we've owned auto repair shops for four generations, and I've acquired some beautiful vehicles, and right now they're kind of just covered up in the driveway.
I would like to actually be able to park in the garage.
Well, this is good, and I appreciate the fact that you've got it, not just sketched out, but you've got it on an instrument survey, it brought out, it helps too.
Absolutely.
All right, anybody, any other concerns or questions? You got the color schemes in there? Any questions? Sets back from the road quite a ways, actually, so, I have any issues with it. Anybody, just nothing, so. Again, this is a public hearing, so if there is anyone wishing to come in before against us, they're welcome. No one, okay, we'll close before Derek, bring it back to the board. Anybody, nothing else? No, Derek, you want to go ahead and do a secret?
Town of Webster planning board consider request by advocate Ron Whiteman to construct a 40-foot by 60-foot accessory structure located at 704 Herman Road, a 3.2 acre parcel, having SPO number 064.01-1-5-22. The planning board classifies proposed actions as type 2 action under section 617.5 C9 of the State Department of Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject for review.
Second.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Kusel.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Kishan.
All right, let's see.
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
For the 704 Herman Road accessory structure, 40-by-60 accessory structure located at 3.2 acres, located in LL Large Flat Residential District, and subject to code of Town of Webster. The lot is restricted to one accessory building. The building is to conform to the size and location presented on the plan. The placement of the building shall conform to all setback requirements. The building should not be placed any nearer to the front property line than the rear line of the footprint of the main building or residence on the lot. Root point on the building will be higher than the existing sign. No commercial use shall occur on the parcel. The accessory building shall be used for personal use only, as defined by the town code. Significant construction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the landlord, to expire on 11/16/2022. You comply with all requirements of any state, county, and town agency. All site bookers to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster, subject to all engineering and governmental approvals, subject to all appropriate governmental fees, subject to the resolution of final approval benefits. That's a motion.
Can you accept it?
Okay.
Before, are you, are you, this is just for private use, correct?
Correct, it's not commercial.
Okay, that's right.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Kusel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kishan.
Aye.
I make a final approval, 704 Herman Road, with everything that's stated on the preliminary approval.
If what you're making it subject to 225-36 accessory, it covers everything.
Okay, so we subject to section 225-10?
37, 36 accessory.
I'm sorry, got the wrong word. 225-12, and 225-36, according to the common total, according to Thomas.
That's good. So I can...
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Kusel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Kishan.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set, we're looking for you right there.
Excellent, thank you so much for your time.
We'll be watching that. We'll see you guys. Okay, next one.
33 lot, Fox Lane accessory apartment located, please. 33 lot, Fox Lane, Effton Street, Phil Home, requesting preliminary final site plan approval to allow the construction of accessory apartment addition to an existing single-family residential home located on a 0.62 acre parcel located in our-2 single-family residential district under the code of Town of Webster.
Steve? Good evening to all the planning board members. My name is Steve Philippow from Richstone Builders, with offices at 1140 Crosspoint Lane, 35B, Webster. We propose for our client, the Aldrages, to add to their 2,316 square foot home that we built and occupied earlier this year, a 574 square foot in-law addition with one bedroom. The plan meets all setbacks, so there are no violations of any setback requirements. The in-law actually integrates quite well into the structures, it tucks in behind the garage, three-car garage, so it's pretty seamless, it is not intrusive to any of the neighbors. All the building materials will be consistent with the building materials used to construct the original home.
Okay. I see where you're putting the addition, crawl space under. Your entrance to it though is from the garage, correct?
Yes, previous conversations between the architect Todd Morata from Green Designs with the building department and Josh Artuso suggested that that was an acceptable method of entrance or ingress and egress. I will say that upon reading the town code for this, it is kind of vague with regard to what the meaning of, of that access is.
Yeah, interior access, when located in the principal dwelling, I've read this thing 15 times today, if I can get anything out of there. Interior access, when located in the principal dwelling, there must be at least one unobstructed passageway between the principal unit, dwelling unit, and the accessory apartment. I understand, to me, that sounds like the door should be like going from that room to this room. You're proposing it in the garage.
Yes, so...
Now, if you put it in the garage, Steve, the way I'm seeing it here, the way you've got it drawn, it looks like the entrance going in would be to the front, well, if you put a car in there, at the front of the car, going into the unit. And then, the entrance for the garage going into the main structure is on the side. So you have to do what, I mean, the idea is if somebody's, or something happens, I guess, would have access to it, that's kind of a lame excuse for getting to it, isn't it? I mean, that's the way I see it, that's my interpretation. Also, I'll go a step further, I don't know, Jack, at the bottom, I'm running to the bottom of this. This is going to be a determination of the board. And I don't want to dwell on this on that one here, but, planning board may waive, subject to appropriate conditions, the requirements of this section relative to the size, utility, service, exterior design, and/or excess of the accessory apartment. So it does have a clause in there that this board can change it if you feel you're okay with it. So personally, I think it says you should have a door going from inside the building, inside the residence itself, that's the way they've always been, but it doesn't say this isn't allowed.
Well, it's still part of the structure, so it's not like they have no connection within the structure. They don't have to go outdoors to go through another door, to another exterior door. They are going from one unit, if you will, through the garage to the main residence. And if you look at how the connection between the two living units are designed, is it avoids having to literally rip out half the kitchen in order to make that connection. So, and, you know, to a different point, if you try to tuck something in behind that morning room there, it kind of becomes awkward, obstructs it. We thought that this actually kind of squared off the garage from an exterior appearance to the neighbors. You know, creates a little courtyard there for the occupants to enjoy. It really kind of made quite a bit of sense, you know, you've got a patio sliding door that does exit to the backyard. And, you know, I guess in this day and age, as far as communications go, everybody has a cellphone or a having, and they would should be able to communicate. Or they can put in a medical alert type device, which would, you know, alert the primary residents if there were a medical emergency.
See, several people, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here wishing to speak in the floor against this project?
Obviously, I'm for it. I think it's for my in-laws.
Okay, okay, good enough, it's good. They're the ones that will be staying in there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you have communication with them and stuff all the time?
Yeah, I just set up all, once this is done, to finish setting up the security system and everything else too, so they'll be, internal communications are out as well.
All right, again, is how, how this board wants to interpret the code? I'm, personally, I'm okay with it, it's, if it's okay with the advocates, works for them, works for their parents, I'm okay with it. And we do have the ability to waive variance on this.
Let's just make, make sure they're all actually on the same page here. So, unobstructed passageway between the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment?
That is just the, is it just a singular doorway that's going from the garage into the separate unit?
Yes?
So, so yes, there is one door that exits from the in-law dwelling unit to the garage, and then they would enter the door, the fire door, the door to the home.
So, in terms of the depth of the garage, vis a vis a vehicle, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so how much?
This would be their door going into the...
Yep, yep.
This is the door going into the main structure. That's the future of the garage, so...
But this would be the lack of obstruction is here, right?
There is no obstruction, they would destroy the... That would be the access door.
So I'm, I'm just wondering, this is really a board decision, not, not my decision, but I'm wondering if there's something that could be placed. Obviously, the door is, potentially could be obstructed by something covering it, a vehicle, but...
Unfortunately, that's the kitchen, okay? The key is what's the depth of the garage? Okay.
That would always need access. Not the same if you have a garbage, or something else, but at least those would be movable objects.
Steve?
Yes?
What, what John is suggesting is, in the garage, it says it has to have clear access, so in the garage, car pulls forward. I think the only impediment there would be if the car went up against the door, which, if you were to put something in a block, and the car bumped against that, wouldn't go any closer, you'd have clear passage around. It's a deep enough garage.
Yes, the garage, I believe, is 24 feet deep, which is deeper than a normal garage. That's what I thought. But perhaps, some type of blocking it, a device that would be, you know, permanently...
Little curb.
Yeah, a little curb. Sure. Would stop the door from being blocked, got forbidden, then it'll be out of the way, or whatever, you couldn't move it, or someone, you know, couldn't move it. Anything else in front of the door, we would hope would be mobile.
So we could affect some type of curb inside what would be the third bay garage?
Yes.
Because that's where the, the entry door to the in-law unit would be.
Yes.
So that a car could only go forward so far, correct?
Maybe three feet, four feet, so the car can't go for a person.
I know, Steve, what I've seen in the past with garages like this, is that that, maybe a two-foot section along the back of the garage is raised a little bit higher than the rest of the floor, so creates a walkway?
Actually, it is an insweep door into both the existing unit and the in-law, so there wouldn't be a situation where they would egress and the door would be locked anyways. It just might inhibit some access, but it would never lock the door, then insweep door.
I think what we're possibly suggesting is essentially a sidewalk on the inside of the stove, along the back of the garage.
Is, is the existing garage, is there now, correct?
Yes.
Two-car?
Three. We're not adding any garage floors.
Oh, all three, all right, okay, I thought... All right. So if you're gonna do that, you could do that, I'm sorry you want to go there, but if you put the curving, you know, or raised, and we used to do that, some of the pens like that, raise it up. But you have to make it over, and then come back over to, to the door going into the house, make it an L shape, in other words.
I would fear if you put a roofed walk-in here, that you create a trick in there.
I'm agreeing with that also.
Especially for the activists.
I think, I think just a bumper, just a bumper, so a car can't...
Correct.
To be legal and safe, just a bump, you know, the car can't go any more forward, sort of, for you.
Like some of the concrete curving that's used in a parking lot? We could fasten one of those to the garage door, and that would be a suitable stop for a car.
Because most of you being able to make a step in the garage, you got four inches anyway, so that would be exactly the sort of stuff.
Right.
All right, again, this is a determination of the board, so we'll poll first, what direction you guys want to go? You okay with that, or you think the thing needs to be redesigned to allow it to have an entrance the way we have always interpreted the code?
I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it? All right, John, Derek, you're okay?
Yeah.
You guys are all right with it?
Just for the record, I agree with your interpretation about material access. And I do know, because we've only ever had a couple of these applications, surprisingly, over the past few years. I think there'll be more, but we didn't have them. And every one of them, who said they had to use interior access, physically interior access. Personal experience of houses in the neighborhood, you know, family members who've had in-law apartments like this, they've all said that they had to have an interior access. And I also know some situations that, because of that requirement for interior access, it actually limited accessibility of EMTs to the house because of that requirement. So for this thing, yes, I agree with the interpretation about how it says that interior access is declared. For the way it fits on the building and the layout on it, I would support doing the variance for this particular apartment.
The other good thing too is...
Knowing that in general...
There is, there is a side entrance on the side of the unit, so...
You gotta go around, you got all around that, that character, too. But at least this gives you a straight shot, a little... But at least this gives you a straight shot to them that.
Yeah, no, no hallways or anything like that, track.
Yeah, no, that, uh, it's, again, it's, it's, we've never had that situation before like this. You know, it's always been an interior door from one unit to come one to the other, like from the start of the hallway, you know? But if everybody's okay, if you can do that, and if you folks are comfortable with that. All right, so, yeah, uh, no one wish to speak, we asked? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back. Mark, you okay with it?
Aye.
All right, good. All right, uh, just for those that. Derek, you want to do a secret?
Yeah, town of Webster planning board consider request by applicant Steve Philpott to construct an accessory apartment addition to an existing single-family resident located at two eighty-six Fox Lane, Lane, uh, point six two acre parcel having SBL number zero five zero point zero one dash seven dash point three. Planning board classifies proposed action as type two action under section six seventeen point five C nine of the State Department of Quality Review Regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Second.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosel.
Aye.
Mr. Malca.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
Mr. Pichani.
Aye. Okay, so I wanna make a motion for preliminary. On this?
Preliminary, do we have a specific one for accessory apartment?
Yeah, here I can, yeah, here I can. I'll make a motion that we, uh, make preliminary approval to
Two eighty-three gallon.
Two eighty-three gallon Fox Lane, uh, is presented, and it meets the requirements of a, a, uh, accessory apartment. And board is comfortable with the layout and demands, or called variance, for the use and access through the garage as presented.
We're not really obrous with variance, we're pushing it first to the
No, it's usually the
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's it. It says variance, right? All right, come here, now, see.
Do you need to say something about the curving there on the garage in front of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a curve.
Put that, uh, the minor curb, tire stop replaced on the third garage in front of the entrance to the apartment. To one of the forward movement of the car. Accessory apartment is limited to an excellent, okay, meets all the requirements, okay. And I think, uh, it's for family, so I'm gonna just make this subject to, uh, town code two twenty-five dash forty-nine. Is it? What, what? Yeah, this is right.
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five dash forty-nine point one.
Second?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Pichani.
Aye.
Mr. Malca.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion for the first approval for two eighty-three gallon Fox Lane, and make that subject to, again, two twenty-five dash forty-nine point one. And, uh, use is a, a, a single heart made unit for parents in-laws. And you putting that up now?
Soon.
Soon, okay, so significant construction demands within one year. We'll put that down.
Second?
Mr. Pichani.
Aye.
Mr. Malca.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Arena.
Aye.
All right, real set.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Happy for you.
You're gonna have a fun seat.
Okay, I guess we're all done. That's a short video, well, thanks for coming in. Hey, now, for this, this is Luke. Maybe we'll That's bad, we're in a
Bloody and anxious, Steve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from October nineteen. As amended.
Second, second. All the favor. All right. That's it. Hey, David Cracker. Hey, wasn't that, oh, yeah, thank you. Wasn't that